The October 3, 2024, Des Moines City Council's study session is now called to order. Councilmember Harris will have the pledge of allegiance tonight. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that six council members are present in person and Councilmember Grace Matsui is present via telephone. Can you hear us, councilmember?
I can, thank you.
Okay, good. Thank you. So, to all of the public attending tonight, welcome and thank you for attending. For those watching online or on Channel 21, please know that we cannot attend to our phones from the dais. So, if you are experiencing technical problems, please email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. I'll say that again. You can email cityclerk@desmoinewa.gov. Thank you. So, do we have any correspondence not previously received by the council?
No, mayor.
Thank you. So, now it's time for comments from the public. And because it's a study session tonight, we'll be hearing comments that address only the items on the agenda. Other subjects may be heard at our next regular meeting. We ask that you keep your comments respectful and please recognize that any person speaking or acting in a way that's disruptive to the meeting will be asked to leave. You'll have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and city of residence when you come to the podium. And we have one person signed in, Bill Linscott.
Thank you, mayor, deputy mayor, council, and staff, everybody. Topic of the budget. The budgets of this city is very complex. A lot of special funds with restrictions. You know, the restrictions are statewide, maybe some are city. And it seems like it limits our flexibility to respond to financial crisis like we have now. And I feel like you ought to take a look at those that are placed on us by the city and actually remove them and see if that doesn't give us the flexibility to address the financial problems we have today. One area that I have not seen any opportunities to be discussed yet for consideration is the marina. We are one of the few cities that have, they own our marina. And we have leasehold taxes on it, but we like them based on benefit profit. But there may be other taxes or fees or opportunities out there that seem like something we check and see what other marinas that our city owns might be doing. Certainly, if you're conscious about warehouse work footage, business of some sort, maybe there's something along the lines of that could be also appropriate. What we are not reestablishing the original footprint of the marina enterprise.
Whoops. Of the marina enterprise kind of surprises me. Originally, it had the waterfront zone in it, and it also had the redondo fund zone in it. And they were removed, and then putting them back together, I think, builds in some efficiencies, much like you're doing with other organizational, where you're combining activities. Also, why are we maybe purchasing security patrols when we have a police department? And a car with yellow lights and a spotlight is less of a deterrent than an officer in a police car. And I'm not sure how we could get that allocation moved so that the enterprise fund actually funds that officer, but I think that's worth looking at. Let's see. The other thing that I think's worth revisiting is take a look at the Dan Brewer briefing made March 10, I think it's 2023, where he described how the allocations from the general fund to the marina were reassessed and applied during the 2008 financial recession. Not sure that truth won't roll out there, but it deserves a look to see what his thoughts were and what they were thinking about at that time. Thanks for the chance to comment.
Thank you, Bill. Is there anyone who is attending tonight who expected to speak but did not realize that they needed to sign in? All right? Thank you. So, on to the main meat of the meeting tonight. We're going to move into our discussion, which is a budget update, and we're going to highlight our finance director, Jeff Friend. I feel like we need a spotlight standing ovation.
I spoke at the Citizens Advisory Committee last night, and I guess word got out because not many people showed up tonight, so they made other plans. So, good evening, mayor, deputy mayor, council, staff, and members of the public. Jeff Friend, finance director. Tonight's presentation is on the budget, and we're going to take a look at where we've, the progress that we've made so far on the budget. We're going to minimize this screen. And we have some housekeeping items also that I think are relevant to the budget process and also are relevant just to the relationship with the city and the public in terms of the communication and understanding. So, we are going to go to slideshow here. Okay. I'm going to go here for like two slides and then go leave. Okay, so, as I mentioned, we have housekeeping to do before we really get into the meat of the presentation. And first of all, one of the things that we did talk about last night at the Citizens Advisory Committee was I provided a PDF of helpful links. On that PDF was a link to the Finance Department webpage, several pages, subpages, of course. But one of the new ones is frequently asked questions on the budget. And then another, there was a neighborhood representative who made a positive contribution suggesting we need to communicate better on long-term debt. So, coming soon, we're going to have a webpage that will have all the information you can want on the bonds the city has and like the interest rates, you know, what they reuse to finance, what the payments are, what the payment schedules are, all that information. So, we'll have a one-stop shop for, you know, citizens of Des Moines who, they're curious about the bonds, the loans that we have, and they can have one place to go to find out all the information that they would need. So, that's what I was going to actually show was if we come down, I believe it's here. This is the finance webpage. This has been newly redesigned, and what we, you can find here is, you know, there's the budget FAQs right over here. Scroll up. So, on the budgets tab is all the budgets that have been adopted. We have the capital improvements plan, including the one that was adopted last month. You know, that happened to me last night. I have some electrical charge about me, I guess. Financial reports, all of our financial reports, annual, quarterly reports, annual audited financial statements. But here we have budget FAQs. So, you can see here, like, where did the budget deficit come from? Here's what is the general fund? Here's what goes into the general fund? What does it pay for? If you remember, if you were here last week, there was a gentleman who asked, in his public comment, what is a capital project? So, now we have that question here, what is a capital project? So, and I wanted to mention this because if you go to the homepage, you know, the first sentence here is, "We are committed to ensuring the city's financial stability and transparency through a wide range of services." And so, I know that there's a segment of the community that might scoff at the fact that we say that we're committed to transparency. But then my response would just be that we are going to, we are committed to it, and the way we can prove it is if we're going to keep doing a better job at transparency. So, when we get suggestions like getting long-term debt information out to the public, you know, we're going to listen and we're going to follow up and act on that. So, this is one thing that we wanted to show this evening, so that's a resource for the community. And then come up the slideshow. Can you, Sarah, can you help me out here? There we go. Also, during the discussion last night in the Citizens Advisory Committee, it was a good lesson, and I want to bring this up because I think that this was a question that was brought up by Councilmember Ossinger. I think that the situation really encapsles kind of how there's been a communication disconnect between the public and the city. So, when I'm asked about the budget cycle from last year, you know, I have memories of that, that budget cycle primarily centered on sitting at my desk going, oh, no, oh, crap. As I feel impending dread overcoming as we see that there is a developing negative trend for the general fund. And then another memory that is primary in my thoughts when we talk about the budget cycle last year is the budget retreat where we did present a forecast, and it did have out years with ending fund balance colored red, where you see green here. So, you know, when asked about that, that's, that's my memory. Councilmember Ossinger's memory was of this forecast, which was presented probably in the public hearings and is featured in the budget book, which is an accurate memory, which I did not remember. But the question was, how can we be giving this forecast with green across for ending fund balances and looking like we're okay, and then now we're in the situation we're in today? And I think that is really a central question and the responsibility of the city to respond to, because I think that's really a question that's reflected by a lot of people in the community. So, I do have two explanations related to numbers, and then I do have one other issue with this forecast, which has to do with presentation. So, first of all, this is a forecast that was made in 2023, so therefore, we didn't know what the ending balance for the fund balance of the general fund is going to be at the end of 2023. And as you can see on that green bar at the bottom, I just mean right here, is we anticipated in those forecasts that our ending balance would be 5.2 million. Our actual ending balance after we go through all of our year-end adjustments that we have to make was actually 4.67 million. So, off the bat, we're already lower by 600,000. But if you recall also during the budget cycle last year, the original budget was not including one department in the general fund. So, there was the events and facilities rentals department. That at first was in it, had been moved to its own enterprise fund, and it was going to receive a loan from like the surface water management fund to seed it, and then it moved, so it moved its negative balance out of the general fund, which made this forecast more balanced. So, if you can see here, the deficit's only $100,000. Now, what ended up happening was afterwards, council and I think wisely reversed that initial approval of that plan, and events and facilities came back into the general fund. So, that 100,000 became more, it's on the, more of, I think, 611,000 deficit. So, numerically, that drove these numbers down, and would probably be negative with that, those losses every year. The problem, I think, with this presentation of this forecast is that you do have a green bar all the way across, but if you look in the column for 2025 and you look at the percentages at the bottom down there, they are in red, but you see that they're 13.07%, 8.89%, and it blurs out. But that means that those ending fund balances are actually under the 16.67% threshold. So, they're greater than zero, so they were colored green. But let's say your ending fund balance was a dollar. Like, would you color that green? Like, no. So, I don't think that that's an effective way to communicate really the negative trend that was, that still existed anyway. So, so numerically, you know, math-wise, there were some things that weren't in here because there had been another plan initially implemented that was reversed. So, that's why, because even last night when I looked this up, and I was like, oh, that's not what I remembered, but then all the memories came back, and then I couldn't sleep. Going forward, because we do want to become better at communicating and better at transparency, we're no longer going to color. The general fund is the only fund with this threshold. So, in other funds, you can have green, you can have red, but what we're going to do going forward is if it's over the threshold of 16.67%, it's going to be green. If it's going to be in between zero and that threshold, we're going to color that yellow because that's a more clear communication of where those fund balances are. And then, of course, if it's less than zero, it'll be red. And before we get started, I did want to acknowledge staff, because I had been thinking about the fact that we've been working on this for a year, and then I was thinking about all the things that, you know, we've been through in the last year. So, you know, to start off with, we've been without a permanent city manager for a year. And then secondly, we've had various directors leave during the same time period. So, for example, Public Works, they worked on their budget. They lost, their director left, I think, back in February, didn't have a replacement till July. So, you know, Tommy Owens and Tyler Beakley worked on the budget themselves, and then some of the engineers were actually on paternity leave. We had two of them out during that time, so they were short-staffed, and some of them who were on paternity leave still worked on the budget at the same time. We had Bonnie Wilkins, who did an incredible job working on just how the recreation department works and just consolidating that, creating efficiencies, saving money. We had a community to development. We, they haven't gotten a lot of spotlight because they're not really in the general fund too much, but they were also without a director since the end of June. They, Dan Hop and Laura DeChico did a great job for the development fund. They reviewed, we'll talk about later, but they reviewed all their fee schedules, looked where they can increase, increase fees. And now I think I feel like I'm forgetting. Oh, and police, Mark Cooy was acting chief, and he was doing the job of acting chief without two assistant chiefs, and he worked on the budget. So, I just think that those situations is pretty extraordinary, the, the work that staff did. And if you put a dollar amount on the ideas that staff came up with, I think we're going to look at tonight, it's about 3.7 million that we picked up. And if you count the Levy-Lidliff, that's another three and a half million. So, I just saw a lot of teamwork and collaboration between staff. I don't think I've experienced anything like that before. So, my hat's off to all the staff that helped with the budget process. And now we're going to move on to forecasts and strategies. So, we're going to take a look at the general fund forecast, strategies that were implemented in the forecast and that were presented in the binary budget that was submitted on Tuesday, October 1. And then following that, we will have forecasts for the development fund, the marina, and the surface water management fund. And when we go through the, the options, it could be that maybe there are some that the council would like to discuss, so you can just, you know, stop me. We'll have several of the strategies on one slide. So, this is the general fund forecast as it is now. So, as you can see, on the projected actuals for 2024, the beginning fund balance is 4.671 million. So, it's, it's less than that 5.2 from the forecast last year. The budget numbers are in the middle column, under 2025 and 2026, with five forecasted years out, the out years. You can see that the out years, the ending fund balances are all in red down there, but we're in yellow underneath the budget and the projected actuals for this year. The change in fund balance, which is the red numbers down here, they're a little blurry for me. We have a decrease in fund balance for 2025, about 836,000, and in 2026, a negative 1.6 million dollars. So, this, of course, is after both one-time funds and structural. The structural deficits are up here, the 1.8 and the 1.9 million over here. So, that's structurally, we solve this up here, then we don't have, you know, this is just gravy, and then, you know, we're in healthy shape. As far as the 16.67% threshold, right now, we're projected to be slightly under that at the end of the year, 12.61% at the end of 2025, and about 6.8%. So, the budget was submitted on Tuesday, and there was a front page cover, and if you look at that front page, you would actually see the general fund revenue and expenditures being equal. And the reason for that is we took that change in fund balance number, that credit amount, and we accounted for that as savings for when, basically, we created an account called staff reduction. We rolled that in. No decisions had been made regarding that, but it was just prorated according to salary wages and, and netted with those expenses. So, that's the reason, if you look at what was submitted on Tuesday, that those amounts equal, but we're not showing that here. We want to show that gap. And the thought is that the city manager really should have a lot to say with the plan, about the plans going forward. You know, she starts on November 1. So, you know, we have, technically, by state law, we have a balanced budget because we haven't spent over our fund balance and our revenue. And this will give us time to implement a plan, to have Catherine Caffrey's input on that plan, guide the plan. And so, you know, what happens, happens probably the first quarter of 2025. And then that hopefully will fix those parts of the lines over there that are red. Strategies, so these two strategies listed first are because they've already been implemented and approved. So, increased business license fees for 2025 is a gain of estimated $100,000. That was approved by council last month. And I mentioned the reorganization of the recreation program. That was, we had approval to terminate the contract of Wesley, bring it in-house. Events and facility rentals and senior services are combined. I think they're up at the activity center, and that netted us a gain of $200,000. Continued strategies, so there are some strategies, and I'm going to ask Mike Slevin to come up here in just a minute. If you remember the budget presentation a month ago, we had a slide about assessments for setting money aside for vehicle replacement and vehicle maintenance and also computer replacement. The more we dug into that, looked in the model, it was a situation of, well, we can't really afford to put the money aside. We can't really afford not to put the money aside. So, what the model showed us was that if we tried to set less money aside than we should, we were just digging ourselves another hole. It was just a can that had been kicked down the road too many times. Reminds me of Councilmember Harris's comment about discipline last week. This was just a place, and Mike Slevin will probably mention discipline when talking about fleet management. And so, we're going to fully fund vehicle replacement in this budget, or we're proposing to, and also vehicle maintenance. And do you want to speak about the fleet here, Mike?
Mayor and city council, one of the, one of the first things when I got here that we had to take a real good look at was, because we were in the middle of budget cycle, and it's the condition of the fleet, specifically the police fleet is the largest piece, and the Public Works fleet also. But when we look at the police fleet, we basically attended the fleet management is consistency. We have not been consistent whatsoever. We seem to buy large amounts of vehicles when we have a good year, and then we end up with all the vehicles needing to be replaced, and we're gambling that the year they need to be replaced is a good year. It's not a good year. So, what we've done is, is we've really, working with the police chief, figured out exactly what the bare minimums were that we needed to get through. And we did some extraordinary maintenance measures to make some of those vehicles last, vehicles that were in better shape. We actually, we replaced an engine. That's not considered normally a best practice, but it might buy us three more years, and then to get consistently where we're in a steady replacement cycle. And we're looking at about $650,000 a year for the police fleet to maintain that we get seven new vehicles a year. And then over a seven-year period, we'll have a very consistent amount of money in that, in that fleet. And if we maintain that discipline, we'll have the lowest maintenance on an annual basis long-term, and we'll have a very effective police fleet. We just haven't had those types of, lack of a better word, that, that type of discipline with regard to our fleets. The Public Works fleet's in the same predicament. We had a tractor go down this year, we, you know, and it's kind of hit and miss, so we'll work on that later. The police fleet really this year was the one that, that needed it. So, we worked on that initially when I got here in, in July. And so, those are the recommendations, working with finance and the chief on how to go. So, we're going to have five new cars next year, and we're extending the lives as many of the best ones we can. We're bringing the K-9 fleet, because we no longer have a K-9, we're bringing them back into the fleet instead of surplusing them. That'll buy us a couple more years, and then over six to seven years, the fleet will rotate out, and we'll be into a decent and sustainable program. So, those are the types of things we're looking at for fleet, and we're going to expand those ideas across the other vehicles. General fund fleet, instead of having, going to a pool system, so we have less cars and have the cars each have more miles, and they get burned up over the life cycle, instead of having a 15- or 20-year-old car that's harder to maintain, which we, we have now. And so, we're, that's the whole part of the fleet maintenance piece, and you'll see more of that next year.
Okay. The next one on the list is retaining computer replacement funds. The computer replacement has its own fund, has a healthy fund balance, so we are going to hold on to about $100,000 of that and use those, that fund balance and that fund strategically in the next couple of years, which is the next line down is moving software and hardware purchases from the general fund to the computer replacement fund where it actually used to be. So, that's about 130,000 a year. We can move it to that fund, which is an internal service fund, which frees up that money in the general fund, and it'll spend a little bit of fund balance in the internal service fund for a couple of years, but then after that, the general fund will have to, to contribute. And then this last one was one that was discussed quite a bit in the last budget presentation was human services. It's in the budget right now at $250,000, which has been the, the amount the last couple of years. But we were going to use, we have restricted funds in the general fund that are provided from opioid lawsuits, so we could dedicate $50,000 of that to cover 250,000 of the 250. And I think Tim might want to speak to this because there's an update with new information on human services.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. So, the updates listed below, but our staff that works with the Human Services Commission met with them, and they've indicated that they believe they can reduce their funding and still be effective at $150,000. One thing to keep in mind, and I know we talked about this with our police funding, was that the way we got to 250,000 during the pandemic was using ARPA funds. So, that was one-time money that the council dedicated to human services to get that number up to 250, to help out those in need during the pandemic. So, bringing that number down to 150, we think the... So bringing that number down to 150, we think, um, the, uh, the commission can still be successful and carry out their mission. Additionally, we have, um, opioid settlement funds, um, that are restricted on how they can be spent. Those come from the state of Washington. And some of the services that human services fund are eligible expenses because they're related to the, uh, the opioid epidemic and and responding to that. So we think we could probably further decrease the general fund contribution to human services, but then supplement that for any organization that assists or responds to opioid issues. And so that we could do, depending on how much they would like to fund of related to opioids, we could fund that with other money and then retain some of the general fund. So at this point, we're proposing to reduce human services to probably 140,000 out of the general fund and and then, um, supplement that with opioid money to get them to 150 or a little more if they have expenses.
So if there's any discussion on the, on this slide or?
Can any of the opioid money be used to fund, uh, the GPS positions?
Potentially. And so we have to have a committee set up. And so we're looking at using our human services committee as our, kind of our opioid funding committee as well, because they're really good at, at, you know, looking at organizations, looking at, at, um, at methods that are really, um, successful in the community. So that could definitely be something we would look at, um, if we didn't have funding through the lid lift.
Councilmember Harris.
Thank you. Uh, given, I mean, it was one-time money that boosted the, uh, human services budget, but given the, um, significant change, is there any chance of the council getting some kind of overview of what the proposed, um, projects will be ahead of the, uh, actual funding? I mean, because in other words, I don't, I just, just saying you're going to, you know, chop off that much money. There may be certain values we want to promulgate, um, more than others, frankly, so.
Yes. So the council would always review human services funding prior to it. The council approves it every year prior to spending it. But we can see if we can get the committee, um, to come to a, a council meeting in the near future.
Thank you.
Moving on to the next slide. Um, one item that has been in the general fund, uh, since 2018 has been a bond payment to the 2018 bonds. So this budget proposes moving that out of the general fund, uh, to, uh, be paid for by REIT. So, um, the reason it would be in the general fund is there's the concept that because those bonds were councilmatic, which means they didn't, they weren't voted on by the public, that the, that you would pay for them out of the general fund. However, that's not a legal requirement. We're not doing that for the 2023 bonds. Uh, so since we have some capacity to pay that payment with REIT instead of general fund money, uh, we're proposing to move that to REIT. So that's a gain of about, right now, $226,000 a year. Uh, then the next one, of course, I expect some discussion on, uh, retaining one-time tax. We estimate it will be about $275,000. Uh, we have word of about five, uh, large projects, uh, coming down the pipe, uh, for development. So that's kind of what that's based on. It's really just a guesstimate. And, uh, also the next item is, uh, freezing the IT director and senior events planner positions, uh, which netted us $303,480. We also decreased the city manager professional services, uh, from 170,000, uh, 75,000 down to 80,000, uh, which was a $95,000 gain. And then, uh, ending the Burean cares contract, uh, and that's $100,000. And so this is all also included in the, uh, proposal.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Yeah, Jeff, can you explain a little bit more about the retaining the one-time tax piece?
Yeah, so, um, the one-time sales tax, one-time, uh, BNO tax is the sales and BNO tax we receive from construction companies that are working on projects valued at $15 million or more in the city. Uh, and the rationale is because those are one-time events. They're not reliably recurring events. And it also relates to back when we nearly went bankrupt and the audit finding for the city was that the city was relying too much on one-time funding. So, um, in the code, we break out that sales tax and BNO tax in the general fund and then we transfer it to a fund that's a capital project fund called one-time tax. And we transfer it there. Realistically, we transfer it there half the time. I'm sure that'll be mentioned. But the purpose is that that's dedicated to capital projects. And so that's the background on one-time taxes.
And so by retaining it, you're retaining it in the general fund?
That's correct.
And so it would be used to?
For operation.
Pay for ongoing expenses?
And can I add to that? So we're, we're anticipating at least $275,000 next year for construction projects that are over $15 million, so large construction projects. This definition of one-time revenue was created by the city council in 2012. So back then, the council said, you know, we were looking at things like SCORE being built. And the budget was built around the money coming in from SCORE. And then SCORE got pushed back a year, right? And so now we have a big gap in our budget. So that was the purpose of this, um, of this, this ordinance. I think one thing to point out is the definition hasn't been updated in 12 years. So a $15 million project then might be a $20 million project or a $25 million project now, based on inflation and all that stuff. So we're, we're kind of using an antiquated definition to define one-time revenue. The other thing is we, in our one-time, uh, revenue fund, we have over a million dollars, right?
Yes.
So long-term, yes, it's, it's not good to rely on one-time projects, which I think if we wanted to, we could look at updating the dollar amount to reflect, you know, 12 years of inflation and costs and all that. But two, we don't need to move the money into this fund next year because we're not going to spend it all next year. We have a significant budget issue for this, this year going forward, where we, just like the, the gentleman commented about the city restricting its own funds when we're in a budget crisis. So maybe this year, we shouldn't restrict our own funds. We should un, we should unrestrict them to get us through this while we work on all of these strategies. I mean, this is a comprehensive strategy. We're working on, we're going to be working on the strategic plan. So our recommendation is, yes, we're suspending it again for one more year. But it's, it's crucial to getting us to the point of, you know, getting us forward where we figure out the bigger structural pieces.
Would, would it be possible to essentially change that money to be spent on potentially revenue-raising projects of some kind? In other words, that becomes an investment in something that's going to help raise revenue. Is there a way to do that?
Well, the council restricted the, the way it can be spent now, so the council can certainly restrict it to something else. I think at this point, we're asking to unrestrict it so we can get through our current situation, which was caused by rising inflation and, you know, a, a worldwide pandemic and a reliance on, on federal rescue funds, right? Long-term, certainly, you know, that could be something the council could consider. I think this year, we're just asking to unrestrict it for 2025.
All right. And then I, I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and Jeff, can you, the 2018 bond, um, can you just refresh?
It's related to the?
It wasn't on the council at the time, so.
Yeah, I had to look it up too because I wasn't here either. It was, it's the North Bulkhead project. So that's, that's the piece of that bond that the general fund is paying for.
And that can be paid out of the REIT funds with no problem?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So the Burean Cares Act contract and animal control, which is always a big issue, has there been any consideration to raising pet fees? And, uh, currently, I know that seniors are exempt from the fee. And maybe it has to be the same criteria as somebody who doesn't have to pay property taxes or reduce property taxes. Have we looked at those kind of things that possibly the pet, the pet license fees could actually pay for the American, the, you know, the animal control?
Yeah, so we have looked at that and that is on our list of ordinances to update. I will say, we've looked at, um, uh, cities around us, cities across the state, what they charge for pet licensing fees. We're on the low end, but even at the high end, we're not going to get $100,000. So I do think that we'll be bringing forward an ordinance to update ours, uh, but it's not going to cover that cost.
Would, would it, uh, will it, it'd help, is what you're saying. Would it also include fines for those that, uh, don't have pet licenses and, like, substantial license or fees?
We can look at, we could look at updating the penalties too. Again, that's not going to get us, I would say it wouldn't even get us really close to that $100,000 mark. But we, you know, we need to update it because we are, it's, it's antiquated. I will say though, one of the things that we've discussed is specifically related to the lid lift would be if it passes, the consideration of still removing the Burean cares contract, but bringing animal control back in-house like we've previously had it.
Yeah, my understanding was this saved us money though, by doing it this way.
Yeah, I think it's a, well, it's a question of saving money versus quality.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
Is there a way to sort of put some qualification around, um, what decreasing city manager professional services entails? I mean, what is that?
So that would be, I mean, if we're just looking at last year's budget or this year's budget versus next year's, the, uh, the ferry consultant has been removed from the city managers.
Wait a minute. Okay, I just want to make sure I get the right ear. Okay, good. Yeah, okay.
Our, our grant writers got pulled out of there. We had a, um, a, uh, staff coach, right? That, that worked with our staff on different issues, um, staff development, that's been pulled out. So really, this, this would largely be our legislative advocate. And then, you know, we don't want to just completely eliminate any opportunity for Catherine to have people that, you know, she thinks might benefit the, the organization. So there still is money in there and that is certainly something we could look at increasing if we got closer to a balanced budget.
No, 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 I was just trying to get a sense of what it was because I, you know, th- those all sound like, sorry, but reasonable, um, things to excise, but the, uh, I, I, I do want her, you know, walking in the door to have some tools and not have her department be, um, you know, completely empty. That said, um, I'm just, I guess I'm being rhetorical, but since we do retain the one-time tax so much, maybe there could be, just to save you time every year, just that it could be a checkbox that was defaulted to on, unless there was some red flag. I don't know, just rather than us having to vote for it, you know, basically every year now. That's just, I don't know, maybe it doesn't save time. But we, we, we basically do it every year and I'm just wondering if it's truly necessary to do that.
The ordinance was created by the council. The council could, rather than waiving it every year, the council could just repeal the ordinance. Um, I will say with time, we just changed the year, so we could do it pretty quickly.
Okay, so it's, uh, yeah, okay. That's the answer. Thank you.
Councilmember Mahoney.
So freezing the IT director and senior events planner. So I know that Dale retired and we haven't hired that position. What's a senior events planner? Is that position open?
Yeah, it's a vacant position that's in events and facility rentals.
Now, we discussed, I mean, obviously, uh, Bonnie Wilk has done an excellent job of trying to figure out ways to bring revenue there. But part of that was, that position was to find a way to bring more. Is that going to sacrifice the opportunity in revenues in that area by, by not having that person to help us?
That's a good question. Bonnie, you want to answer that one? You were, you were too comfortable back there, so I had to get you out.
Great question. Uh, we actually are pretty fully staffed in the events and facilities. We had, uh, Sharice's vacant position at the senior center that we put for Khan Kaisem, who's been working with Courtney and Rob as an intern, and she graduated, um, with her, uh, hotel hospitality, um, degree. So with that, moving everybody together, it kind of maximizes the efficiencies of the center being fully staffed when they can also go down to the beach park to give tours. So we would love to have the position, but they're all capable of kind of picking up the pieces for now and.
In this place and time, that's the prudent thing to do with the idea that expanding later, when we can generate more revenue and get a proven track record.
Correct. And we're also working with recreation as well, integrating both departments to cross-program, so to speak. So it's not just, the burden isn't just on the events and facilities staff trying to now coordinate for activities for seniors. It's also recreation helping and vice versa. So we're trying to merge everybody together.
Excellent answer. Thank you.
So I, I, if I could just add to that, the freezing the IT director, that's not a long-term strategy. Um, you know, we would like to fill that position. It's just that it's vacant right now. And so the longer we can hold it vacant, we can, we can, um, you know, add up some of those savings. But eventually, we will have to, to fill that position.
Get Chris a cot and put it in his office.
Well, and I think, I mean, Jeff made that great point about, you know, almost every department has been running off of, you know, our staff stepping up, um, you know, to help with, help defray the costs of retirements and and that kind of stuff. And we've, we've, you know, we've really worked together very well to do that. But yes, Chris will be worn out, um, and and will need to fill that position at some point.
Councilmember Oxger.
Given the council's, uh, particular interest in improving communications, uh, what effect will leaving, uh, freezing the IT director position have? Is that going to delay our ability to, uh, improve the website and to, uh, basically increase communications?
I don't think so. Um, I think, uh, one, improving the website would probably be, one, something that we would hire a vendor to do. Um, that's something that we're looking at funding for next year. It's been a priority for the community and for the council. And then it really relies a lot on staff to, to provide the content, which one would be our communications director, but then also all of our departments, um, in providing the information to update. Just like Jeff provided the information for the finance website, um, you know, we'd rely on staff to do that.
Okay, uh, I did have just, uh, one more piece of clarity. Cares versus the ACO, when you say remove the Burean cares contract, that means ACO as well. In other words, no, no ACO, no Burean cares.
That's correct.
Okay. And then in regard to the bond payments, when we take, when we retain, you said we had enough to cover for this year, next year. The 1 million is enough to cover us for a while, at least for our bond payments, because that, that come out of there.
Right, yeah, that's not coming out of the 1 million, but it's coming out of the real estate excise tax funds, which there are two of them. Um, and so we do have sufficient balance to make that payment. If something happens to the real estate market and it goes down and our REIT goes down, you know, maybe we can move it back to the general fund if that's healthy. But, um, as it stands now, uh, our REIT actually, I think I've mentioned this earlier in the year, we're one of the few cities whose REIT has actually improved over last year. So I'm comfortable moving that bond payment over to REIT and freeing it from the general fund.
Okay. That was all I had. Thank you.
Okay, um, more strategies. Eliminating the city currents, uh, which was, uh, a savings of $80,000. So that was $60,000 to produce, uh, $20,000 for postage. And then COLA for employees. We reduced COLA to three percent for general employees, which is a savings of seventy-five thousand dollars. So the issue with the cost of living adjustments is this June CPI U for Seattle was three point eight percent. We have two bargaining units whose contracts expire at the end of this year, which would be the Teamsters and the Police Guild. So the thinking there is, we're going to go into negotiations. We're likely to give them the three point eight percent anyway, so that's why that wasn't reduced. And then we reduced it to three percent for generals. And the thought there is, you know, if there are layoffs and work, you know, the workloads, you know, grow for everybody else who's here, then at least, you know, we're not taking their COLA away from them also on top of that. Next one is moving franchise fees from payment fund to the general fund. So I don't know if, Tim, you want to talk about this one or?
Yeah, so in 2016, we negotiated franchise agreements with our water and sewer utilities, where they pay a six percent franchise payment. At that time, the city council decided to restrict those funds to the street pavement fund. And that, that's where that five eighty-three number, that's about an annual number that comes in. So we now have Redondo Park Zone cameras that are bringing in revenue that is restricted by the state and it's restricted to street improvements, pedestrian improvements, which would include pavement maintenance. So the thought would be that we remove the restriction on the council imposed restriction on the franchise fee payments, move that money into the general fund and then take our money that's restricted by the state and move it into the street pavement fund. And so ideally, the street pavement fund would remain fully funded and we would then be moving, you know, five hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year into the general fund unrestricted.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Are we projecting the Redondo street cameras to bring in half a million a year?
Yes. Thanks. And I will say, we were looking, we'd like to look at additional sites so that our, we don't just have cameras in Redondo, but we want to look at all of our park, all of our parks and see if there's speeding issues, you know, dangers to, to people leaving and, and arriving at the park, doing feasibility studies. So looking at other places outside of Redondo where we could implement these and we could, you know, further fund the pavement program or fund additional sidewalks somewhere or something like that.
Councilmember Mahoney and Councilmember Harris.
You'd said this in the finance committee meeting, but also in the payment fund, in addition to moving the Redondo's cameras, also there would be the TBD money during vehicle registration. So there's kind of a net-net, we're keeping that fund at its robust, at its level because it's a million dollars a mile to pave roads these days, but then being able to shift that money. In addition, there was discussion that we'll talk about, that I'll report out next week, where there's, there's one utility that doesn't pay utility taxes and stuff like that and another one that we potentially could renegotiate that could even make that a little bit bigger going into the general fund.
Yeah, that's a good point. I think we get about a million dollars a year into our street payment fund. And so a little more than half is from the franchise payments and then the other piece is from the, yeah, the TBD, which is your twenty-dollar tab fee, forty.
I get reminded about that all the time, but I tell them it goes to good use.
Councilmember Harris.
Yeah, this is probably getting into the weeds, but the city currents, I, I would just, I would hope the city could maybe look at some sort of print-on-demand kind of a deal. I've talked to a number of residents who, and they're being sincere. They say, well, I'd pay, you know, I, I mean, I would actually purchase a subscription if there was a way to have some kind of, and it doesn't have to be something as formal as we're doing now, but who, who really would be willing to pay a few bucks a, a year to have, you know, a piece of paper show up in the mail. And I'm just throwing it out there, it's, you know, probably for another day, but I just don't want to be, it, it really does have this, you know, value for, for a certain number of people.
Yeah.
Councilmember Mahoney.
I think we're breaking a record, Councilmember Harris, that we're going to agree on the same, two things on the same day. I also believe the city currents is one of those we have to really seriously consider because it is one of, it is probably the only piece of communication we assure that gets to at least every address in some format. There's so many social media pages and some people links to websites and things like that where they, they don't get the information they should that comes from the current. So that's when we're, unfortunately, in this day and age, do we cut it off and cut communication to a lot of people? So that's, that's the only one I kind of struggle with. I understand the recommendation, maybe twice a year, something like that as a compromise. But I still believe it's essential. I also have spoken to many people who, when I was mayor and I made comments in there, they definitely, whether they agreed or not, I had a lot of communication. I was surprised at the far-reaching impact it had.
Councilmember Harris.
I mean, ju- just to be clear, I was, I, I, I'm, I'm more, you know, thinking about buying a twenty-five-hundred-dollar, you know, printer with a stapling thing and I just, and I'm, I'm not pandering here. City manager George, your weekly updates have been very good and I can, I, I can just see us doing something that essentially correlates that kind of stuff. And, you know, for the couple hundred people that would want it. Anyway, we're, we're, we're taking too much time, please, I apologize.
Oh, so we didn't agree, so.
No, 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 we, we, no, we, we agree actually on the sentiment that there are people who are going to, you know, value the print document. And if there's a way to do it for five grand versus eighty grand by buying a gizmo, because the truth is, the city now, in the last year, is generating the requisite content. Okay, I mean, just on the Facebook page. It simply needs to be correlated in a way that is cost-effective. And then, you know, the, the two, three hundred people who are willing to pay five bucks for postage a year, they should absolutely be able to obtain that. So that, that's, that's all, thanks. You guys are, yeah, you're doing, you're actually creating the thing now, so thanks.
Deputy Mayor Steinmetz.
Hey, is there another currents coming out?
Yes.
For the end of the year? Is there a way to get a, something in that that asks people if they want to subscribe and see what the response is? So that we can either have something similar or go to something like Councilmember Harris is suggesting so that there is a print version that people can subscribe to and see what the demand, what the response would really be. And I realize that still takes the eighty out, but if there's a twenty thousand of that as mailing, maybe we keep the twenty thousand for, to print and mail, something that can be done in-house. See what the demand is for that, I think would be helpful information.
Mayor Buckstein?
Yes.
To add to Harry's statement, can I ask a question to go along with that?
Absolutely.
I think those are all clever ideas to offset some of those costs. I was under the impression that city currents was supposed to be somewhat self-sustaining with some of the paid advertising. Do we know how close we come to paying for it through advertising?
Well, we spend eighty thousand a year on it. So we would spend more if it weren't for advertising, but that's still a substantial sum. I, well, I think about twenty thousand of that is mailing. But yeah, we, so we, I think it's about fifteen thousand an issue that the city pays and we probably sell about ten thousand in advertising. So it would be twenty-five thousand in, in issue if we didn't. I, I just checked, our next city currents is going out in November and our deadline to get articles is October twenty-fifth. So we can, we can start working on just a simple survey question and we've done that in previous city currents, so. We can include that.
Is that, is that good, Councilmember Grace Notewee?
Sorry, it was hard for me to hear. So I know the cost, how close are we to covering the cost with advertising? Or how much more advertising would be needed to break even?
Fifteen thousand an issue.
Great, thank you.
Were you ready, okay, go ahead, Councilmember Oxiger.
Yes, with regard to the closing of the Stephen J. Underwood Park bathroom and parking, how does that affect our efforts to maximize the amount of rental opportunities we have?
So for this one, historically, I believe we had, we'd only opened the park for events, for rentals. So that's what we would, we would move back to that model. What we have been doing lately is we've been opening the park all day for people to go to it. And so as a result of that, we have a security company that comes and opens the gates, monitors the park and then, and then that requires us to open the bathrooms and clean them. So it wouldn't affect rentals, we would still rent the, the facility, we'd open it, we'd clean it, we'd do all that sort of stuff. When we're renting it, we just wouldn't open it, you know, on a Monday if there's no rental.
Thank you.
Two things, one, it looks like there was quite a robust response to the city current. So if we want to move some suggestions forward, I, I would, I think I would like to invite the council, if you have any other ideas, to send them to you moving forward. And then my suggestion would be, I also recognize a great value in the city currents, but I'm wondering about just changing out products. So vintage, you know, newspaper, newsprint, maybe a little change-up of weight would also make a difference in our postage. And then in regard to Stephen J. Underwood, if we could, if we did do that to put a sign up that says parking available at the activity center, bathrooms are closed, something like that. I think a lot of people think that we close it when there is parking and a pathway available, even when we close the gate. So just a comment on that. Any other comments or questions on this page, Councilmember Harris?
We are eligible for some speed zones similar to Redondo outside of parks, correct, under the new law or not?
Yes, oh, oh, not park zone cameras?
I, okay, I'm, that's a question. I, I thought the, the law got tweaked so that we were eligible for up to three cameras that are not specifically within park zones.
Yes, that, that is correct. There's a fair amount of hoops we'd have to jump through equity studies and speed studies and things like that.
Jump by all the.
But they, they are an option.
Okay, no, I just wanted to clarify that it, we, we didn't have to go through the whole thing of establishing the park zone with there, but there are other hoops to jump through, okay.
Yeah, and that's something we're, we're going to look at for sure, is are there locations in the city that could benefit from speed enforcement through cameras?
Well, and also just not the money. I mean, there are a number of areas that people just zip along, you know.
Yeah, I wasn't talking about the money, I was talking about the speed and.
Oh, well, no, I'm, I'm in the money zone right now, but well done, thank you.
I believe there was a couple of intersections that could be open for red light cameras as well.
We can certainly look at that.
Excellent, excellent, thank you. Any other questions? All right.
One item we did skip over was the end budget software subscription. We have to pay for it through 2025 per the contract, but then we wouldn't renew it the following year and I don't sense as big a protest about this as city currents, so we'll move on. Strategies on deck, so these are two items that we were discussing in the finance committee early today. First is a warehouse square footage tax, which is a project that Matt Hutchins actually worked on. An attorney had the best financial idea, so I'll probably have to live with that for a long time. So basically, the concept here is that there's a B and O tax and we wouldn't want to raise the B and O tax rate, but there's businesses like warehouses and, you know, we're talking about also, you know, the, the business park where there's transactions happening there that don't necessarily generate sales tax because they're shipping out, there's not really shopping going on there. So one way that you can address the lack of, of sale tax, sales tax coming in there or B and O tax also is to tax based on square footage. This is something neighboring cities do, such as Kent and Auburn. And I think there's a few others, DuPont was on the list. Also, they also, the businesses there don't pay any property taxes. The port owns the property and they don't pay property tax, they pay leasehold tax. And the leasehold tax actually is like, doesn't amount to that much as you would think. So it would be, I think it was about sixty-nine thousand a year. So therefore, the finance committee approved us this, this moving forward for more discussion to actually have a warehouse square footage tax that would bring in additional unrestricted revenue into the general fund. The second one is the utility tax on non-franchise prohibited utilities. So there are utility tax, utilities that have franchise agreements with the city long-term that are locked in at about six percent. But there are others, such as Water District Fifty-four, that do not have a franchise agreement and, or we don't impose a utility tax on them right now, but state laws says that we are able to do that. The cities are able to impose that utility tax. So our calculation is at six percent, which would be equitable compared to other utilities, would generate another eighty-eight thousand five hundred dollars for the general fund. So these two items are not in the budget at this time because we hadn't talked about them yet with the finance committee. So after all of those strategies, we just wanted to show September fifth, as I had mentioned then, we were really at point A where we had gathered everything together and then had to look at where we stood. In 2025, we had a deficit of over four point five million dollars. For '26, we had deficit about four point three million. As of today, that deficit has shrunk down to eight hundred and thirty-six thousand for 2025 and one point six for 2026. So our gain over the last month has been three point seven million in 2025 and two point seven in 2026.
Jeff, if I could just add, so yes, that's, that's good, what, what we've done, but these cuts, a lot of these cuts, you know, will impact the services we provide and, and, you know, they will impact our residents. So in that sense, it's, it's great that we're closing the gap, but, you know, some of these cuts are not ideal for the organization. This also doesn't include the lid lift, right? So that was a budget strategy that the, that the city staff came to the finance committee with, that the council approved. That's not reflected up there. And then I think Councilmember Oxiger, did you have a question about the last slide?
Yes, I did, thank you. On the warehouse square footage tax, is that number reflecting current warehouse space or is that anticipating Business Park West?
That's current space.
Okay.
And so the Business Park West would probably add another couple hundred thousand to that number.
Okay. I'm just concerned that we're not getting into a situation where we're having to choose balancing the budget versus an environmental issue.
Well, fortunately, the council doesn't have to choose the environmental issue because that'll be the hearing examiner. So that's, you know, moving forward on October eighteenth and that decision will be made based on state laws and all that stuff. So the council doesn't have to get involved with that. But yes, that number is strictly related to existing warehouses. But yes, that number is strictly related to existing warehouses. And then any future warehouses that come online would also be subject to that tax, but we haven't looked at, at the numbers yet. Only just knowing, I know the square footage of the proposed plan. So based on the, the calculated tax, it'd probably be a couple hundred thousand. Thank you.
Speaking of Business Park West, also, it should be pointed out, as far as the forecast and the budget, it does include one-time money if that, if the project goes through and the street sells, then we would be collecting that. So we collect, we included that in the budget. So if the project doesn't go forward, well, we wouldn't be collecting those, that revenue.
Councilmember Harris?
Well, yeah. When is that income going to be recognized? Six twenty, the, the sale of Track C?
Yeah, well, it's, it was six ninety minus the sixty-nine thousand.
When, when does that six twenty-one show up on the books in 2025? I mean, we don't get the check.
We budgeted it for 2025.
Okay.
So there's a, we have a purchase and sale agreement that would be finalized, that the council approved it with the surplus. But the port's not going to sign it until they have approval for construction of the warehouse. So if it's not approved, the sale wouldn't go through, and that's what we talked about last meeting.
Yeah, no, no, no. I was just wondering when, I mean.
So it would be next year.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Oxiger.
Just to clarify then, you've already got the six ninety calculated into the budget?
It is included for next year as part of our budget strategies. Okay.
For clarity, it looks like there are two things being talked about. One is the Track C proceeds. Okay, but you, are you talking about the warehouse, this, this number for the warehouse?
Well, if the warehouse doesn't go in, then the sale doesn't go through. So if we are, if we are calculating on, it's almost like we're assuming it's a done deal that we're going to get the money.
So just to clarify, that number for the warehouse square footage tax, if the council imposes the tax that we've discussed, it would raise about six hundred and twenty thousand, not counting the future development.
Right.
The sale of Track C, which was also, which was six hundred and ninety thousand dollars, we have included that in 2025 as revenue, assuming that that goes forward. So the hearing is October 18th. We'll know, we'll probably know before the budget's adopted. If it's not approved, then we can pull it back out.
So then, in that case, then we would have to reduce, otherwise, another six hundred and ninety thousand dollars.
Yes, our, our revenue for 2025 would be out six hundred and ninety thousand. Yeah.
Just want to clarify that. Thank you.
So now we can move on from the general fund, take a look at the development fund, and we have a forecast here. Okay, so the development fund was started with one point five million dollars of general fund money, which separates development that's based on fees into its own fund. And the design is so that, you know, as the construction marketing, you know, you know, slows down, speeds up, you know, we're more reactive to those changes. And so it's a little difficult to forecast because if forecast, you're looking kind of at a linear trend. But really, the activity in this fund is kind of more like a roller coaster. So there's, we have a budget in the middle there for twenty-five, twenty twenty-five and twenty twenty-six. We're projecting the ending fund balance for 2024 to be nine hundred and two thousand dollars. There's two pieces to this fund. So the community development department is in this fund as well as Public Works. So when engineers work on something that's development-related or there's right-of-way fees and they're working on those types of things, that's all accounted for in this fund. So at the ending fund balance, we're projecting to be about six hundred and ninety-five thousand in '26. It'll be down to three hundred and sixty-nine thousand. So you can find, there is a downward trajectory here. However, I mentioned previously those five large projects coming in. So we do kind of expect it to rebound. We worked closely with Public Works and with community development on just really drilling down on this to look at the fee structures. As I mentioned at the start of the presentation, they reviewed fee schedules. They looked at, you know, what other cities are doing, and it looked like basically we're a few years behind as far as what was being charged for fees. So there's really what this has on the revenue side is about a 10% increase in fees, like for business permits. And then on the Public Works side, we really have to manage what salaries and benefits, what employees' salaries are being posted here. Because Public Works employees, they tend, their salaries tend to get split over a lot of different things. So I think one of the things that we've started doing, especially this year, is making sure that that is an appropriate, you know, recording of their salary and benefits. And so when you take into account the, the capital projects that will soak up their salaries and benefits and divert them from this fund, we still have a positive fund balance at the end of, actually, the next three years, which I found pretty exciting. So as I mentioned, the nature of this fund, you know, and the market increasing and decreasing like a roller coaster, I don't know if there's that much value in forecasting 2030 and 2031 primarily because it's based on the timing of projects, more so than just regular, you know, everyday economic activity.
Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I've always been struck by how, you know, you brought a valid point that our, you know, engineers, Dan, would get a certain percentage of his salary from like Sound Transit and so forth. Is there a way to generalize what percentage of, of, you know, the, the salaries come out of this fund versus like, you know, other funds?
Yeah, in general, and I'm glad you mentioned Sound Transit because this fund has been receiving money from Sound Transit, which will end in twenty, in 2026, we're going to get about twenty thousand dollars from them and then it'll be done. As far as salaries and benefits, pretty much the community development, planning and building departments, this is basically their home fund. But for engineers, I know one of them is about 95% charged to this fund based on the projects that they work on. Then there's, just trying to remember everybody who's in here, the city engineer, Public Works Director. I think the city engineer is budgeted to be about, I think, fifty to seventy percent in here, but in reality, his salary is really posted to capital projects. It's just in the budget process, we don't know the percentage of project.
Excuse me, I thought there was like, basically, it's like, no, half comes from here and half comes from Swim or some just.
No, no.
But there isn't. So thank you and I apologize. Please continue.
Councilmember Mahoney?
So the fees, they're based on the value of the projects, correct? And you talked about that increasing the fees as a future option with a, you're considering a CPI indicator. I'm going to be on that because what I'm trying to do is have a keep-up with us rather than do these steps.
Yeah, we had that exact conversation with Dan Hop and Laura Tachico. So they're revising the fee schedule, but does, does not require council action. And then they were going to tie it to the inflation because, I mean, the Marina does the same thing. They tie their fees to inflation. So.
And the last question, so obviously with the Marina steps and some of the development there and the place-making we're trying to create, the development of downtown, if it was to catch wind along with Pac Highway, the situation here would be much different. We'd have revenues coming in. I know we got to pay for them later, but those could offset the deficits we have later down the line.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this fund goes how development goes in the city.
Yeah.
And Jeff, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but the city pays permit fees as well. So are.
That's correct.
So we're paying on the Marina steps project, we're actually paying into the development fund, just like anybody else would that's doing a big project.
Yeah, we have to try to get permits just like everybody else.
We kept it under fifteen million though, so we could.
So just a moment. Councilmember Grace Motsui, do you have any questions on this one?
None at this time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next fund. These two are the fun ones. These are the enterprise funds. The enterprise funds are basically treated as private businesses. We cannot, as I explained last night, the Citizens Advisory Committee. And it's a question that's been asked a lot in the community this year is, why can't the general fund just take money from the Marina or from surface water management? And the answer to that is that these are treated as private businesses. So their costs and everything need to be, accounting-wise, treated as a business. And they can't, you know, by law, they can't permanently divert their money towards the general fund. What the general fund can do is they can charge the Marina and they can charge Swim for services that they provide. But those funds cannot just say, hey, general fund, here's five million dollars, you know. You don't, we don't need anything for that. So they can't, you cannot permanently divert funds from these two funds. They can make loans, which is inadvisable because if you can't pay it back, then you've permanently diverted those funds, which is illegal. So that's one of the reasons, you know, I get asked from time to time, well, how come Swim or the Marina have so much money? Why can't, you know, the general fund just take from there? Is this, we can't? It's restricted. So this is the forecast for the Marina. We have green all the way across. Budget for 2025 and 2026, we have revenues, operating revenues about five point four million in 2025 and five point eight in 2026. Operating expenditures about four point five million each year. Ending net position, one point seven million in 2025 and about two million in 2026, which does look a lot less than the ending net position in 2024. And the reason of that is because of the dock replacement project. So that net position is reflecting of the bond proceeds of about twelve point seven million that the Marina has. So that's why those numbers look so large. If you look at the second half on the bottom of the schedule, you can see the capital improvements that were approved as part of the capital improvement project planned last week. So you can see the Marina dock replacement there for the thirteen million, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars in the 2025 column, which contributes to that total net activity of a negative fourteen point eight million dollars. So that's how, is going from that sixteen million that you're starting with and then ending up at about one point seven five. So that, again, that's the dock replacement, which is the main project right now in the Marina, which is expected in the fish window late 2025. It's fully permitted. I'm always proud when I know stuff about capital projects. Surface water management, yes, oh, sorry.
Any questions on Marina? So I do have one. Just in reference to Mr. Lynn Scott's comment earlier tonight, with, you know, you can't divert money, but can the Marina do a fun, you do have fund transfers right to the police for their services or, or any other department. Can the, but can the Marina, for example, hire or contract security from our police department or participate? Do you say, if they could secure security from us versus another contract, could you talk about that possibility?
Yeah, in general, Scott, you can pipe in if you want to. He doesn't want to. So what the general fund does when it provides services to other funds, and this is part of the budget process, it's called indirect cost. And we have a model that breaks down things, services that the, the general fund provides according to certain metrics. And so the Marina pays for these indirect costs. So they do pay for police services. They pay for accounting and those services from the general fund already. So if they have a security firm, you know, that's, I think that's a separate issue. Would you say that's correct? Yeah, so that's, I don't think you'd want, it'd be probably more expensive to have the police officer come because then that will increase his indirect cost allocation that he pays, which is already over, probably near a half a million dollars so far annually, probably about four hundred and sixty-five.
So what you're saying is to answer that question, because he's not the only one that asks that.
Right.
What to say that is it's, you're not going to get the same amount of service for the same amount of money if you try and contract one of our officers to do it versus contracting a security company to do it. All right, thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Yeah, I think I know the answer and it'll make Marina tenants unhappy. But what is the reason that the all-purpose building, which I call dry stack, why is that in 2027 as opposed to 2025? I mean, in other words, why couldn't you swap?
Yeah, Harbor Master's turn for this one.
I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor, Council Scott Wilkins with the Marina. Right now, the, the bonds that were taken out are specific for the Marina dock replacement project. So we don't have the additional funding to do the dry stack at this point until we can get some of those payments down and everything else. We hope to move it forward, maybe to 2026, but at this time, we just don't have the, the capability for the payments on it.
But the tenant restroom isn't applicable use for that?
The tenant restroom, we budgeted very low throughout many years. And so we have four hundred thousand dollars in the, in the bank for that and that product. And then we had four hundred thousand of ARPA money, which has to be used, and I'm not under contract, so it had to be moved back out. And every estimate I have is a million dollars.
No, no, don't, don't, I'm not trying to, no, I'm, I'm, other than the public, you know, expressing the notion that, you know, a million for, for a bathroom and so on viscerally, but no, I, I'm just, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Sorry to have you around.
Mayor, one quick question. I, I really want to hear from the Harbor Master on why he uses security versus, say, police officer and what the cost review was. You brought it up, but I, I wanted to hear from him if you don't mind.
Yes, we hire a, a private security company and they take care of Marina dock walk-in each evening. They check the bathrooms in the, in the beach park at certain times and lock them up at certain times. They do our parking lots checks and everything else. They do the signs up at the overlook, the sound overlook thing. They also do the lockup at the Stephen Underwood, the gates and the bathrooms and such. And they also do the lockup and unlockups exact certain times down at Redondo. To have a police officer do that and gets called away on a call or do something like that, I think there could be a big discrepancy. And, you know, being honest, they make a few bucks more than the private security guy does.
I don't have any other questions. Keep going. Go ahead. Oh, you do? Oh, thank, thank you.
So if, so if the security, if the security company that's hired by the Marina is responsible for opening and closing the Stephen J. Underwood Park, why are we, how are we able to transfer forty thousand dollars elsewhere?
I should have explained that a little more carefully. Sorry. The Redondo is a general fund zone, the waterfront zone, the north parking lot, Stephen J. Underwood and everything else. The Marina hired the security company, but the pay for them monthly is divided up equally between different things. The Marina pays a portion, general fund at Redondo pays a portion, general fund at waterfront, things like that. So it's not a direct cost. Yes.
Also to follow up on that, because that was mentioned earlier of why those zones exist. And it relates to, as I said, that an enterprise fund can't support a general, general government. So a few years ago, sorry, I always have to breathe heavy when I say auditor. The auditors show up and the auditors determined that the area in Redondo, the area where the North Bulkhead is, was not the Marina. And so when they determined that's not the Marina, then that becomes the general government and the Marina cannot support that. So that's why they were broken out. And I, I remember that really well because I mentioned to my predecessor the same thing of combining them and I learned not to suggest that again. So, but that's the rationale of why they're broken out like that and why they remain.
and why they remain broken out, separate from the marina.
Yeah. Excuse me, I'd like to say, one more thing. When the marina staff is at Redondo doing cleanup or repairs or whatever else, same in the waterfront for the parking system or whatever else, we, my guys write their time down at those, at those places. And the general fund reimburses the marina for their time at those places. Anything else?
Like for good deed.
I just looked at Scott.
Wait, 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 wait.
Okay, Councilmember Harris.
So now that we have the new, you know, software, and since everybody codes in their time, I mean, at some point, could we get a breakdown of which zones, you know, how much, basically, how much time people are spending on security in the different areas? Just out of curiosity. Does it make sense what I'm asking, I guess?
Yeah, so we, when people code their time to those funds, I mean, we see their salary. Unless there's an activity code set up for a certain activity, we won't see that. I don't think we have something set up for security there.
Okay, no, I just think it would be interesting if we have this firm and they're performing this range of tasks to understand, you know, what percentage of their time is, you know.
Yeah, that would be, if they're a private firm that we're contracting with, then that would show up in a different way. So they, they would show up as like a professional service and not, so we would see on the invoice what they did. But not in the actual system.
Okay, all right. One of those things to dream about, thank you.
Any questions, Councilmember Grace Matsui?
No, thank you.
All right.
Okay, surface water management. Again, the budget columns are in the middle for 2025 and 2026. They have a healthy ending net position going forward. And it's important to remember that net position, that reflects what assets the fund owns. And so when you look at the ending net position being, you know, 27 million, 26 million dollars, you know, that reflects the fixed assets that the utility owned. So the pipes in the city and all that stuff, that's really where that is. As far as cash goes, they would have about, like, right, as of today, they have about 10 and a half million dollars in actual cash. But they do have a larger net position due to the assets that they own. So having said that, in 2025, their beginning net position is 27 and a half million dollars. They have operating income of about 1.2 million. And then after some other miscellaneous items like interest income and then the capital improvements that they're investing in, the total change is a reduction of about 124,000 for 2026. They start at 27.3 million. Their operating income's about 1.5. Total change is another reduction, again, of 515,000 due again to capital improvements that are 2.4 million dollars. And then going out, you see continued investment in capital improvements into 2030. But yet, they still retain, because of the assets that they're investing in and that they own, have a healthy net position. And the next slide shows the projects. Is it okay to move to the next slide?
I have a question on this slide.
Okay.
So do our assets show up for other buildings and capital in other departments or other areas, like does the general fund, you know how you have your, your capital assets are included in the ending net position? So does the general fund have that as well? Like, for example, it was kind of interesting when Devin was talking about SCORE, so we've got equity in SCORE, right? Does that, where, like, where would that show up?
That's, that's a good question. So I'll start at the beginning. So surface water management and the marina have assets because they're treated as a business, they're enterprise fund. So governmental funds, like the general fund, they don't have that. We account for that kind of off to the side. And so the assets and liabilities that the general fund have are primarily payables and receivables and cash. So it, it just really reflects the cash coming in and out for operations. If we sell land, like, you know, if that street sells, then the revenue can come into the general fund. But the actual asset isn't accounted for in the fund. And then you're asking about our equity with.
I threw that in just because I thought it was connected, but now it isn't as connected any, I don't know. Where does the equity in SCORE show up?
That would be, yeah, that would be, I think, off the top of my head, I believe that would be in the, it would be in the general fund. And if it's not, I will email you guys and let you know. But off the top of my head, I think that that's where that is.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahoney.
Do we charge any utility tax from the surface water management?
Yes.
Can we?
Yeah, so, and it's split between the street fund and the general fund. So I think there's about 15% that surface water pays. And it's split between those two. And I think that actually is in the code.
It's.
Great question.
I haven't seen that specifically taken out. I've seen other utilities.
They pay 15%.
Yep. I guess, moving on to the last slide. This is the list of capital projects that the SWIM fund has invested in over the next few years. This was, again, part of the capital improvements plan that was adopted last week. I'm losing my breath. There's a lot of projects. So there's, I think, the Barnes Creek Kent Des Moines Road culvert is one that's ongoing this year without any dollar amounts after 2024. I believe that one closes this year. And, yeah, there's a lot of them. That's about all I got on that, unless Mike Slavin wants to come and elaborate. Yeah, no.
I can't see you, Councilmember Oxacre. You have, no questions? And Councilmember Grace Matsui, any questions so far? Okay, looks like we're.
Yeah, sorry about that. Yeah, I did have one question. I'm wondering, with this list of capital improvement projects, how many, and is it possible to use some of that surface water management funds to put in sidewalks? Anytime there's a project in an area that doesn't have sidewalks?
Councilmember, this is Director Slavin from the Public Works Department. And so the answer to that is if the utility is breaching or placing, breaching an existing sidewalk, we can do replacement. But if we were to put a pipe in the road and then charge, and say, put the sidewalk in as part of the stormwater project, that is not, my understanding is that's not allowed. We try, we couldn't do it in Tacoma. I don't believe we could do it here. I think that's because that's considered a transportation mode and not a sewer mode or a stormwater mode.
Thank you. What about areas that have open drainage that you would like to replace with a basin?
So if, if the system is a stormwater, if, if the system requires the installation of a pipe or a catch basin to control flooding, and it's deemed that that's part of the capital project, then we can put the pipe in and we can put in the catch basin. But we cannot put in, we would not be putting in the sidewalk. We would fill, fill to grade. And sidewalk curb and gutter are set by the transportation projects.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harris.
I have to say, I mean, I'm perhaps being a bit snarky, but I have to say, I'm sort of surprised because we got this grant for the 223rd Green Streets, which is reviewed by the Transportation Committee. And so I'm, I think that'd be confusing to the public, but, you know, that's by the by.
Councilmember Harris, so that grant is specifically for what's called, it's a water quality grant. And so the street that we're looking at putting in, the grant will not pay, unless it's a permeable street, which is considered a stormwater asset. So it's different than a regular paved street. So if we decide in the design, if it's a permeable street, then that can be considered a stormwater asset, stormwater can pay for that. Also, if we put in, say it's a rain garden that we use or something that cleans the water, those can be stormwater assets. An example of that, I don't know if you're familiar with Tacoma, but the, the rain guards along Pacific Avenue, for instance, those are a stormwater asset, paid for stormwater. But the road itself that's driven on is not a permeable street and it was paid for by the Public Works Department through the road fund and the street funds. So really, it depends upon the use of the individual asset. And each rain garden, for instance, in Tacoma would have its own asset number and be tracked that way for the utility, just like each catch basin or each pump station.
Thank you. That's an extremely generous answer. I gotta stop asking these because they go, yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Nutting.
Sorry. Another question. I do want you to speak to if, if it was determined that we were going to install a permeable street of the huge expense it would be to upkeep that street.
So, Councilmember Nutting, that is an example of a trade-off, right? So technically speaking, and the experience we had with lots of different grants in my, in my previous position in Tacoma was is that permeable streets are easier and less expensive to install. Specifically, if you have large runs of pipe that you need to, to get to that street. And so there are proper places to put permeable streets. The maintenance is more extensive than regular streets. And so there's a cost benefit that you have to look at, right? Is it better to use catch basins, pipes and those types of, those types of issues? Or is it better to do a permeable street, given the soil materials and et cetera? So it's really a trade-off and you have to look at the cost benefit analysis of each project. It's like using a steel bridge or a concrete bridge. Which one do you go with? They all, each project has its own benefits that the engineers look at.
Okay, I don't want to get into the weeds, but I, I'll agree to disagree with you.
Street sweepers, neutral turns, I get it, I've done it.
VAC trucks that have to suck the permeable pavement constantly every six months. And, yeah, they don't work.
So, never mind. I would, that would be too much in the weeds. Keep going.
I believe that is the end of the presentation.
Oh, all right. Councilmember Grace Matsui, I'm going to turn to you first. Do you have a question or comments?
No, thank you.
All right, getting up and down the dais, questions or comments?
I have a question.
Councilmember Mahoney.
Actually, this is for chief, though. Yeah, no, you're up there. It's, basically, with this budget, I just want you to talk about what the differences in service would be with the current budget they're proposing versus the levy.
So the current proposed budget has a couple of things that will impact operationally. One of the things in here is the storefront, the Redondo storefront. Not having that is going to change where the officers stage up and spend their time. So you're going to have less officers in the south end of the city, more officers using this to turn in evidence, et cetera, at the police station right next door. The current budget doesn't have an animal control component in it. So cutting the CARES contract leaves our code enforcement officer, who has other duties as assigned, including animal control in his job description, would be fundamentally the only animal control we have. I also, we probably have to leave a little bit in there because we do have some mandatory quarantine issues that we would have to address when we have a dog bite that we don't have a tool for under this budget. So we probably have a little bit of fine tuning on that. And then Monica getting people services is not included in the current budget. So her position would cease to exist. And the crime analyst position would cease to exist. So things like we talked about today, as a matter of fact, at the PSCM, there's nobody to do that work. So the efficiency of that work, as far as investigations, would be substantially reduced. So that's current budget. If the levy were to pass, we would, and I should be clear, we're also cutting two police FDs. So two uniformed police officers are currently being cut out of this budget. If it passes, we would retain everything we're kind of talking about to this point. We also would add four police officers. And how we deploy those would really be about a discussion, probably with the city. Things like motorcycle officers, traffic officers, some of those resources would make sense for a community like ours. They would be things that we would look to add to the community if the levy passed. And the way the levy is actually written, it adds a code enforcement officer. And I think it would make more sense to utilize that as an opportunity to bring dedicated animal control officers back in-house and have a limited contract for, for housing. So I think there's some opportunities to grow on all those fronts. There's some equipment and training advantages that also come into play with the, with the levy revenue. So if we had levy, those things would add. Without the levy, those things wouldn't exist as well as what we talked about today for reductions. Is that correct, Don? Is there a follow-up? Sorry.
Thank you. That's, just wanted to ask you that.
I feel like I should stay here.
Plus, I like putting you on the spot.
I think I covered everything.
I'll bring you back when you're halfway back to your seat.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Harris.
And these are just general purpose questions, right? Not, we're not part of any particular, is that correct? We're at that portion of the thing? We're, okay, good, okay. So, yeah, in your previous position, did you have this much, you know, floor time? I mean, did you expect coming in that you'd be, because you're here basically, you know, every Thursday.
I think this might be the first time in my life where people are more sick of me than my wife is. So no, I have not been in front and center like this before. And I hope that when we get financial stability, you see me less frequently.
Okay, well, okay, good. Thank you so much. You're being, you know, put on the spot a lot and, yeah, very much appreciated. So, and so here's the thing that I look at, just when I look back at from, is it fair to say that, you know, the 2020 budget was sort of like as good as it gets? I mean, I, I'm just, when I got on the council, that was sort of considered, or, you know, right before the pandemic, things are going along pretty good. And I, I mean, I'm just using that as the baseline.
Yeah, I think when you look at the trend from 2014 through 2019, 2020, before the pandemic, that you, you see growth in fund balance. And so I think part of that, as you've mentioned before, is, was, was discipline. And then the pandemic happened, which, you know, is a once in a lifetime occurrence and challenge. And so, you know, the city employed certain strategies. What was interesting when I looked at it recently, as far as the actuals, because I was in Tuckwell at the time, and Tuckwell's top revenue is sales tax and they have the mall and all that shut down. And we lost, you know, a third of the revenue. Although I was thinking in Des Moines, I was thinking, well, you know, Des Moines lost sales tax. And it actually didn't get impacted in sales taxes, at least when I saw the numbers, as much as I expected. So we actually unders, we actually spent less than we brought in through 2020 and 2022. I'm not thinking about what the budgets were then because I wasn't here. But that kind of shows we had one-time money coming in and we did make it through the pandemic. But really, when 2023 happens and, you know, in the 23, 20, 2023 budget, you know, I don't want to sound too critical, but the 2023 budget, the, it was budgeted for more expenditures than revenue. And then we had, we had the police guild contract settled. We had the Teamsters contract settled. So we had, and we had that inflation. And so that really coalesced in 2023. So I think you're right, like, there's this growth in health through, up through 2020. Then we kind of coast through the pandemic. But then, you know, as we had said earlier, you know, bills come due. So that's where we have to look at our structural revenue.
All of this leading up to the unfair question. Because the interim city manager sent an email, you know, talking about, basically, it sounds like just across-the-board departmental, what I would call haircuts. And, and that's unfair, it's, that's the first pass and everything. But the thing that sticks out to me is that in, when I look at previous years, assuming the accounting systems are the same, so in 2020, So in 2020, the Zenith, it's like salaries and benefits are 59% of the general fund. And then 2023, it starts going up to like 68%. And now we're at 66. Sorry, this is the unpleasant conversation. But if you're really thinking in terms of that haircut approach, which I'm not, it's like taking 10% of your heart and your liver and your kidneys, you know. But what is the thinking about just saying, okay, we're going to make salaries 60% of our budget going forward? You know, maybe that's a terrible strategy, but I'm just looking at 2020 as being, you know, the best.
So the growth in salary expense over the last few years, that growth in salary hasn't been because we've been adding a lot of employees. It's because, you know, we've been getting, there's been cost-of-living adjustments that are tied to the CPI. So for example, when CPI was 10.1%, you know, general employees got 8%. And then the issue with cost-of-living adjustments isn't just that while you're paying more, but your positions are keeping up with the job market. And as the chief had mentioned in the conversation prior, when you have officers applying for cities, you know, they look at a screen that lists the cities side by side. So they see, you know, what we pay. And so the job market is a consideration, which is also a reason, you know, in the proposed budget, at least so far, you know, we have generals at 3% and not less. So to say, you know, 60% of the budget would be salary, I don't think is a good strategy because, I mean, it's a percentage, and you can kind of manipulate it. Well, we're gonna underspend over here or overspend over here. So let's say you want to hire more people, and your guideline is, well, you know, salaries and benefits will be 60%. Well, you know, I'm gonna start spending a lot more on services and contracts and other places. And then all of a sudden, oh, I can spend a whole lot more on salaries. And so you're just gonna be driving everything up.
No, I hear you. And I stipulated that, but I'm just, because we're supposed to be talking all options on the table, I'm just thinking of it in terms of, you know, if the primary cuts are in expense, in expenses, you know, hardware or what have you, I'm just throwing it out there that, I'm just throwing it out there that over time, is there some value in looking at each main category, hardware, software, and also salaries? I know it's the most awkward discussion, you know, on the planet. And I'm sorry, but it's something that I'd like us to think about.
I would say you can only cut so much before you get to salaries and benefits because it is such a large, you know, portion. And that's the unpleasant part of the conversation.
Yeah. And I think just to add to that. So that's what we've been doing. So we've been working on these proposals, these strategies, you know, expenditure cuts, revenue increases. And eventually, if we can't balance the budget this way, you know, we'll be looking at staff reduction. So that's coming down the pike. What I will say about the 2020 budget and those leading up to it, those were balanced budgets, where we weren't spending more than we were bringing in. But I wouldn't say that they were great budgets because we've consistently had an understaffed police department, you know, where we're below the state average, and the state's 51st in the country. So, and as we have retirements and that kind of thing, we, you know, as people leave, we spread job duties out to other existing employees. That's what we've always done in this city because our property tax increases by 1%. And we don't have big box stores or anything like that that are providing this massive revenue. You know, our revenue goes up as we have new projects come on, but we don't have these mega projects that are, you know, big-time revenue producers. So, you know, yes, we had a balanced budget, but I don't think it was a great budget. And so, you know, doing, going through this exercise, finding areas where we can increase our revenue so that we can provide structural revenue year over year to build our staff back up so that we can, you know, not just provide the minimal level, but maybe we could provide great service. Maybe we could improve our parks and rec department. You know, maybe we could expand our police department so that we have, you know, adequate staffing. So I think, you know, can we get to a balanced budget? Hopefully. But, you know, maybe we can increase that revenue somewhere, and we can expand, and we can, you know, grow with the region that's happening all around us, so.
No, your points are well taken. And I, my colleague, the word gain, I winced a little bit at that on one of the earlier slides.
I meant we gained ground.
What's that? Yeah, no, 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 I'm not. Don't take, people take these things. No, but it was just, you know, it was the right word, but it's just, but it was also right to point out, to be mindful that it's not gain. It's just, but you're doing really great work in terms of, these are all very useful exercises in improving efficiencies. And I want to thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Steinemus and Councilmember Mahoney.
Yeah, Jeff, I do want to thank you. And, you know, about your wife, remember, absence makes the heart grow fonder.
Yeah, that's why I'm going away this weekend.
And, yeah. And we'll be glad when you're gone, too.
Yeah.
You know, I do think the staff as a whole has done a great job of putting together a good list of suggestions on how we can try to get back into balance, which we're required to do. And if I remember correctly, the 2023, when there was that big increase in salaries, I think I've heard you explain this before, is that the police contract was finally renegotiated, but it was negotiated, including back to 2022, when the officers were working without the contract. And so we had to go back and pick that up. And so that's part of that big spike that we saw in salaries that year. Is that correct?
Yeah, so there was about, so it was negotiated at the end of 2022, but it was signed in the beginning of 2023. So what the result was, was we had to pay a retro payment, is what we call it, for the officers for 2022, which amounted about $683,000.
And so that drove the percentage in 2023 up significantly.
Right. So in 2023, we spent, it's just a hair over $3 million more than we brought in. But 683,000 of that was applicable to the prior year.
And then, there's no, I mean, because labor contracts are somewhat unpredictable how they're gonna work out, as they're finding out from the ports on the east coast in Texas. You know, to, how do you, how do you manage and forecast what those expenses are going to be, given that kind of an environment?
Well, for this budget, we know that the window, at least in terms of a COLA, and AJ's not here to actually add a lot more knowledge, but from the financial perspective, their contracts, both the Teamsters and the Police Guild, have, for a pay increase, a window of between 3% and 4%. So, for example, last year, the CPI was 4.6. And so that meant the officers got 4% because that was the top of the range. So at least we have that as a precedent, and we can see inflation coming down, which is 3.8% this year. So giving, putting 3.8% in the budget is, from my point of view, is pretty safe because it's within their window right now. And that number's going down. So to give them what they would have gotten anyway just kind of makes sense. So that's kind of how we, we looked at it for the COLA. But as far as predicting, you know, what we're gonna be asked, or, you know, what additional things that they want to negotiate for, that process hasn't begun. So, you know, right now, we've got the 3.8%. I think it's pretty safe. And then we'll negotiate from there.
And I think I heard fairly early on, and, you know, also last night at the CAC mentioned this, that this budget was going to include sort of a certain amount for staff reduction, salary cuts, to be implemented when the new city manager gets here. And I didn't see that in the slide proposal. Can you talk about that a little bit more and how much that's anticipated in order to bring this budget into balance?
Right. So that was when I mentioned that the remaining gap, the 836,000 and the 1.6 million. So that's, that's the value, so, of the staff reduction, essentially. So if we were to reduce, say that we have this budget, the levy doesn't pass, and then we do staff reductions. So in 2025, that value, the gap is 836,000. Now, it could be, you know, that we look at the structural, you know, and address that. But we'll just assume that we'll look at the 836,000. I don't want to get too, you know, accounting here. But we rolled that gap up into our expenses. So it's, what is called is a contra account. So, which is a little bit in the weeds. But say you spend $50,000 on salaries. So you have an expense of 50,000. And then you have a contra. Well, that would be a negative number underneath, and you net them together. So that's why, why I explained that the general fund showed the same amount of revenue and the same amount of expenditures is because we took the gap, and we rolled it up into expenditures and brought the expenditures down. So that, it's kind of a placeholder for whatever, you know, Catherine wants to do and works with us on when she arrives later. So that's really, accounting-wise, how we address that.
Okay. And then the other thing that I heard last night that I hadn't heard mentioned tonight is that the final budget is going to include some statements by department of mission, values, goals, eventually getting around to measurables. Can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so, and then to back up, to give this some context, I mentioned last night, city managers, and Catherine's watching this. In general, city managers tend to like a couple of awards related to finance. One is the, they're both given by the Government Finance Officers Association. One is for financial reporting. We do not, we no longer qualify for that award because we no longer report our annual financials on an accrual basis. We report on a cash basis. So we don't qualify. But the other award is called the Award for Distinguished Budget Presentation. And, I mean, these are professional standards. And, you know, they basically tell you what you need to do to get the award. But part, the key part that we haven't had in budgets, and I don't know the last time it was done, so it's been a long time, is that you have the city's, you know, vision and goal, goals, and their, you know, their vision for the city. But also departments, especially in the general fund, have a mission statement, goals, and accomplishments of what they've done in alignment with those goals. And I said last night, it's kind of like, you know, we're basically saying, we have your money. Now, here's what we're trying to do with it. And we haven't had that communication with the community of, this is what we're trying to do, as far as the budget document goes.
Great. Well, I appreciate the thought that has gone into something like that. I appreciate all the hard work that's been done by everybody. This is not easy stuff to do. And so I'm really complimentary to you, the whole staff, interim city manager George, and everybody. It shows a lot of effort, and it's very much appreciated. And we're gonna, we'll figure it out. Thank you.
Sure. Councilmember Harris? Did you, go ahead. Okay, thanks.
So I do, Tim, Jeff, the rest of the staff, I've really appreciated what you've done and what you've had to look at. I really appreciated you giving a presentation to the entire staff to explain the situation. It's clear they understand economics, that costs are way up and revenue's not. And I appreciate that. And also, we're dealing with some safety issues publicly at a regional level that we're trying to deal with. So I thank you. I just have one question that, as the council could help, is if we were to, say, lower the reserve from 16.7% to 10% or 5% or something during this time, would that be any assistance to the situation?
You weren't here last night. So my, that's something I've been thinking about, and we've been thinking about in finance. So the 16.67% is, that's based in accrual accounting. And that's, your fund balance has to cover, basically, two months' worth of your operating expenses. That's where the percentage comes from. And I, for the time being, and I think that we're gonna discuss a topic, this topic in the Finance Committee next month, is that I think it's good to keep that threshold. But if it was to be lowered, just, and this is just my opinion, you know, the council might feel differently. Say if we lowered it to 8% or something lower than that, then I would, my proposal would be then, if we were to do that, then we would have what was called the contingency fund, which is where you put a certain percentage of revenue aside for long-term issues, something that they had in Tukwila. So when the pandemic come, they had like a fund of a couple million dollars. And I referenced last night because, as I said, we report on cash basis. And so the state, if you go to the financial intelligence tool, and I liken this to the old Twilight Zone movie, do you want to see something scary? Which is actually, is not funny if you look at it, but they have, you know, we submit our 2023 annual financial statements, and then the state takes that, and it puts it in this tool and analyzes it. It has our financial health. So, and it's basically the cash basis calculation, that's the cash basis version of the 16.67%. If you look at it for 2023, we ended last year with $2.3 million. And then the threshold, 60 days, right? It's two months. And how much $2.3 million would get us? Would get us 32 days. And then the average of other cash cities is like 400 days. So it's not a good, it's not a metric that reflects well on us. But I do think, when the time is right, I guess we're having Finance Committee right now. But I think maybe later, and we can talk about this later, is maybe that's the proper metric to use since we're reporting on a cash basis, and we can actually update that number throughout the year. Fund balance, we can really only calculate that at the end of the year. So we're going through the year, kind of reporting on cash basis, and then we get to the end of the year, and we're talking about fund balance, which is not, that's accrual, that's different, which we can do in the meantime. But I think that is a topic worth discussing. And if we can discuss that in Finance Committee, that I think there's, that'd be worthwhile.
Yeah. What you're saying is we'll cross that bridge as we get closer to November.
Yeah, you know, if we're financially stable and we can get longer than 60 days with cash, then that might be the time to switch how we measure. But I think it's a topic that's worth discussing.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nutting, or, excuse me, I called on you earlier. Okay. Councilmember Nutting, and then Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out that I do remember vaguely that I think about 10 years ago, maybe 11 years ago,
years ago, maybe 11 years ago, we were in that situation where our fund balance wasn't 16 point, whatever percent it was, that we, we had allowed it to fall me behind quite a bit. I think we were down to 8%, if I remember right. Six, okay, thank you. Um, so that was a budgeting strategy back then as well.
Councilmember Harris.
Um, thank you and, um, the deputy mayor brought up something that, um, just, if you look at our financial, our budget book from like 2010, 2012, I don't want to, but I think part of the, in recent years, the budget books don't, um, have not, they, they express numbers but not value and it's just a fact that back in the day, each se, each section would, and I thought it was sort of trite at the time, you know, there'd be a lovely picture of a police officer or an engineer, you know, digging something or whatever, but there would be a, a list of accomplishments and where your money goes. And now I recognize the value of it and, um, I just encourage any kind of, and I just have one, um, just that'll, because I can never seem to say anything without, um, the thing with the Redondo substation is that for years, we paid for it and the public had absolutely no idea of the value proposition of it. It was just this blacked out, um, building and, um, all of us received a tour of it a couple of years ago, um, and there was encouragement to try to get officers to use it more, but it wasn't being used all that much. Um, and it was hard to sell the council on, uh, mo, most of us on what it was used for and I, if it's being used more fruitfully now, that's swell, I'm sure there are lots of other places that are being used more efficiently, but that's the kind of thing that, you know, it sounds coarse, but when I say to sell things, um, I, yeah, so anything we can do to present the value of each of the items rather than just the, you know, revenue and expense object is, um, is swell. So thank you for working on that.
Uh, any, Councilmember Grace Matsui, do you have a question or comment?
Um, it's hard for me to hear what's going on from the podium, so I didn't quite catch everything that Jeff had said, but my comment has more to do with maintaining a healthy reserve and hopefully even budgeting in a rainy day fund for downturns that are unexpected to be able to have, uh, something to fall back on when we can and really thinking about, um, where we can balance the budget so we are not having those labor or other major expenditures outpace our revenues. And so, um, while a 60% mark like Councilmember Harris suggested might be, um, too prescriptive, I am wondering what we can do to ensure that, uh, staffing and labor continue to drive up, uh, since it is the major contributor to our budget.
Thank you. Any response or?
Um.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Oxiger, I can't see you when you're back, so I just, I want to make sure I catch you if you're, uh, raising your hand. Uh, okay, well, I, I guess my comments are, uh, it's a lot to consider and the information we got yesterday, that's a lot, just to go through that carefully and, and think carefully about it. Um, in regard to that, will there be more, a more fleshed, fleshed out budget book with, like, with sections that present, uh, either graphs or pie charts or bars or, or intros to departments or a budget statement?
Uh, yes, that's my top priority next week is to put that together.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, so just to add to that, so we are looking at, um, you know, we have a budget deficit still, you know, we have the, the outcome of future staff reductions in 2025 to balance the budget, but we're going to be working on this every day as we move forward to try to close that gap. And then we are going to have our first reading of the budget on October 23rd?
24th.
24th.
After the town hall.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so we, yeah, we have the town hall on October 22nd, um, we'll have the first at 6 o'clock?
6:00 PM.
6:00 PM, at the Beach Park Auditorium. Um, and then on the 24th, we will have the first reading, that's a public hearing, so we'll, uh, public comment at that. Um, and that will incorporate, you know, any, any sort of new feedback we get, any sort of new ideas, we'll look at incorporating the warehouse tax, we'll look at, um, the utility taxes, uh, you know, we'll keep working to close that gap. Um, and then we will have our second public hearing on November 21st.
Yes.
Um, and, you know, if we, hopefully we can adopt a budget then, if we can't, we still have another, uh, council meeting in December that we could adopt it at. So we're still two months, kind of two months out, um, so we still have a lot of time for comment, ideas from the council, ideas from staff, um, you know, ideas from Matt, we'll hope, we'll get a couple more from him. Um, so yeah, so we got some time, but, you know, we're working on it every day, um, and so there will be updates, there'll be changes, we can incorporate things we hear from the council, um, and, and, you know, propose new ideas in the, in the months ahead and then whatever that ne, whatever that gap is, you know, we'll be looking into 2025, their staff reductions and working with Catherine on, you know, making those decisions maybe in the first quarter, you know, so she can, you know, come in, assess, you know, what we're doing and, and, you know, kind of work with us to figure out if there's changes that need to be made, so.
Okay, uh, so looking forward to that then, the, the town hall, I'm hoping a lot of people come to that and that, that'll be a really great opportunity, I feel like, for, uh, citizens to give input and ask questions and for us to be as transparent as we possibly can and I, uh, compliments to this finance page, that's fantastic and, uh, hope a lot of people visit that in the coming weeks. Uh, also the council is, uh, you know, it's never too late to do a good thing, the council is going to have a vision, mission, values retreat, hopefully coming out of that with some, with a paradigm that can guide our final decisions on this. I think the staff has done, uh, a magnificent job in reviewing all these, but I think it's important for the council to do their work as well in that. Uh, and maybe what we'll find as we come out of that is, it's already been relatively clear, but I think the exercise is important, so that's going to be professionally, um, uh, facilitated for us and that's coming up on November 14th. So it will be after the vote in November, but before this second reading, so that will be, I believe that will be helpful. Okay, uh, if there are no more comments or questions, uh, Councilmember Harris, would you like to take the motion?
Sure, um, I move to adjourn the council meeting.
Have a second?
Second.
Councilmember Nutting with the second, all in favor, raise your right hand. Councilmember Grace Matsui?
Aye.
Aye, and we are adjourned.